All right, we're ready to go. We're gonna start with the bond hearing first and then we'll go to the regular meeting. So we have the 1028 bond project hearing first.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Mike Thurber, Jeff Quackenbush, and Jim McIntyre. They're here to present on our 1028 bond project hearing for 2026. We'll go through that process, then we're going to do a second hearing for the 2830 bond. And gentlemen, thank you for being here, and I'm gonna hand the floor over to you.
Good evening, Mr. DuBois. Mr. President, members of the board, Jeff Quackenbush with Barnes &amp; Thornburg. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Tonight, we have the first public hearing is on the 2026 project, and that's going to be specifically focusing on doing improvements and renovation at the intermediate school, doing some outdoor extracurricular facility improvements, and then also doing some additional HVAC work at the high school. They, we are also authorizing some additional work to be done in connection with all the facilities to the extent bond proceeds are left over once we get done with those primary projects. We will, at this public hearing this evening, we will have a presentation from Mr. Thurber on the financial information, like you've seen in the past on other projects. Then at the conclusion of that presentation, you will then open it up to the public to provide any comment on the project or the financing as presented. Then we will close that public hearing, then we'll move to the second one. This is the first of two public hearings that were required to have by Indiana law. We will have the second one of these at your December board meeting, December 16th. And so we will go over that same information at that, that meeting as well. At the conclusion of those public hearings, we will then present two resolutions to you, one for the 2026 project and financing, and one for the 2028, 2020, 2030 project financing. And those will then be considered for you for approval as preliminary determination to proceed with the rest of the legal processes. If you decide to approve both of those that evening, then we will publish another notice in the newspaper about that action, and then we will wait 30 days for the community to respond to those if they want to. If they don't, then we will come back with additional financing processes and meetings in 2026 for both sets of projects. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the process or the general project for 2026 as I've described it. And if you don't have anything on questions regarding that, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Thurber. All right. Hearing no questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Thurber.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those who do not know me, I am Mike Thurber, and the name of my firm is Thurber &amp; Brock, and we have been the corporation's municipal advisor for many years, and we are serving in that same role for both of these proposed bond offerings. So thanks for having us in. It's always nice to be here with you. Kyle, you're expecting too much of me here, I think. Oh, maybe not. So, good. So I will just briefly go, go through the slides that you all can see up on screen. This is a picture of all of your currently outstanding bond issues and the payments that you are making on those outstanding bond issues per year. As you can see, in, in 2025, the amount of debt service that the corporation is paying is roughly $5.2 million. And that outstanding amount is scheduled to go down yearly, every year, and then when we get down to 2034 and beyond, you have those small amounts of annual payments. So look, there is, as you can see, there's room for additional debt, and the goal is to do these additional bond offerings without an increase to the amount of debt service you're paying every year. This slide is a schedule of your scheduled debt service levy by year. In 2025, the levy is scheduled to, is currently $4.8 million. It is scheduled to go up a little bit next year, however, the debt service tax rate will go down a little bit next year. You experienced another increase in your assessed valuation. Your 2026 net AV has, has increased, which enables the tax rate on that levy to, to be a little lower than if the AV had stayed the same. So the rate is scheduled to decrease just a little bit next year. And then every year beyond that, the levy is scheduled to decrease. Please stop me at any time if I'm being unclear or if you have any questions. The next slide is the same slide as before, only the, the areas in blue represent the debt service that you will be paying on the 2026 project. Those bonds will most likely sell toward the, toward the end of 2026. We, we may wait in later in the year to have the bond issue for the simple fact of having your AV by the time we sell bonds, but we can always do that bond issue, close on the bonds before your AV comes. So the timing has not been determined. We don't sell those bonds yet, but it'll be sometime in 2026, and the first levy or the first payment on those 2026 bonds will occur in 2027. So you, as you can see, even with the additional debt service that will result from the 2026 bonds, there will be a decline annually in the total debt service. And the reason for that is to make room for the next series of bonds that will most likely take place in 2028. This is just an illustration of where the bond proceeds will be spent. So the amount of the 2026 project that's being approved is $8 million. And of that $8 million, about $250,000 will be spent on issuance costs. That money will go toward the municipal advisor, your bond counsel attorney, your local attorney, Mr. Quackenbush, and Mr. McIntyre. The underwriting fee will be paid from that pot of money, if you will. The trustee bank will be paid. The standard and pores rating fee will be paid out of that $250,000, and some other miscellaneous fees also will, will come from that little slice of $250,000 that you see. And the rest of the proceeds will be spent on the actual projects, on the bricks and mortar, and all of the upgrades and improvements that are listed as, as the project for this bond issue. So this next slide is the required information that we need to have on hand for these hearings. Excuse me. So I'll just go down line by line on these things, and I'll be happy to elaborate on any of them or talk more in detail if you like. For the 2026 project, the maximum par amount or principal amount of the bond issue is $8 million. The maximum term of the bonds is 20 years. It may not take that long to pay the bonds, but it is not uncommon for us to specify a term of 20 years in case we need to take that long to pay the bonds off. The maximum interest rate is estimated at 7%. Now, we only put that 7% figure in there to be conservative. If the bond market should suddenly become unstable, or if interest rates should rise unexpectedly, we need to protect against that unforeseen increase. If you were to sell bonds today, you would do so at an interest rate of roughly 4%. So we just include that buildup or that increase in there simply to be conservative on the rate. If it, if the bonds were sold today, it would be, the yield on the bonds would be a little under 4%, actually. The maximum interest cost is estimated to be $5,995,000. That's a high amount, and that is based on that high rate allowance of 7%. If bonds were, were to sell at 4%, you'd be looking at a much lower total interest cost on the bond issue. The maximum principal amount plus interest would be $13,995,000. The annual principal amount plus interest would be $2.9 million. And what that means is your annual payment on the bonds is scheduled to not be any greater than the $2.9 million in any one year. The 2025 or current debt service fund levy is $4.8 million. The current debt service fund tax rate is 59 cents, or .5955. In 2027, the estimated debt service levy is $5,076,500. And that debt service fund tax rate is estimated to be 56.95 cents, or roughly 57 cents. The percentage of maximum annual debt service divided by your net AV is roughly three quarters of 1% or .74%. And the percentage of outstanding and overlapping debt divided by your net AV is roughly 7%. And that is just a calculation of the principal amount outstanding of the school corporation's debt issues combined with the principal amount of bond issues of other units that share, that you, that overlap with you or, or are underlying with you. Harrison Township, Honey Creek, Monroe, small section of the city of Kokomo, the county, et cetera. And that 7% is very much within the, the boundaries of what we typically see for a school corporation. It is a, it is an amount or a percentage that is, is customary and even a little bit lower than a lot of other units in comparison, in case you're, you're wondering. So that is the nuts and the bolts of the financial information or data that we're required to have on hand for you on the 2026 project alone. And I will be happy to explain in any more detail, answer any questions, anything like that, if, if you might like it.
Do you have an approval of this one before we go on?
We don't need to approve. This is just information only, so you can just do public comments or comment, questions for the board and then offer.
Really approve of the closing of the meeting, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you gotta do the closing.
So two questions from my standpoint. Number one, maximum term of the bond, 20 years. So there's no, like you said, we could pay off early. No penalty for that, correct?
Well, once the bonds are sold, once we are locked in on the rate and the term, you, you are stuck with, if you will, or you will be paying that term, whether it be 15 years, 18 years, or 20 years. There is the opportunity to refinance the debt at some point down the road. It won't be for a few years after, if refinancing is an opportu, is, is economically viable. But once we are locked into that term, that is the term of the bond. So it might, a lot of it depends on the interest rate that we, that we lock in at the time we sell bonds. Does that answer the, your question?
Yes, you're good. And then the, the second part is the impact on, on the taxpayer. And Kyle, you may need to lean in here for that. So we talked about net AV, you know, increasing so forth, we're, we're taking on. So if you go back to slide, was it slide four, showing the debt service that's, that's being added for the 2026, what does that impact look like for the taxpayer, taxpayer in terms of their tax rate and so forth? So just for those in the audience, more in layman terms.
So last year, our total tax rate was $114.31.
Yeah.
This year for 2026, we will be 1.0821. So it's actually gone down.
Yep.
Now, our levy has gone up. Now, we have more AV to pull from to get there. Now, what we've communicated as our plan moving forward is to maintain that 2026 levy. Now, we do know SCA 1 is going to have an impact and pull up that tax rate over time. We, along with some others around the state, were fortunate that our AV did spike 10 and a half, for us, 10 and a half percent this year.
Nope, that's good. Just wanna make sure, just for common knowledge.
Any comments from anyone in the audience?
Evan? Make a motion to close the, the 2026 bond hearing.
I'll second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Now we're up to the 2028 bond project hearing.
All right, so it's gonna look a lot like what we just did, but we're gonna have Mr. Quackenbush back up here for our, our, start of our public hearing for the 2830 bond project.
Good evening again. So this project is a lot more broad in its scope in that it is identifying use and improvements at all of your facilities, existing facilities. You may remember that a couple of years ago, you did a facility assessment and identified significant amounts of mechanical, operational costs and maintenance that need to occur at your buildings just to maintain the status of them, like updating HVAC, updating roofing, updating lighting, flooring, wall covering, floor coverings, all of that sort of thing. And so this project would continue that program that you started back in 2024 with the bond issue and that will not be addressed as part of the 2026 project and financing at that point in time. So it is for a much larger amount of money. It was, it is authorized to be issued in one or more series of bonds when we get to the resolution in the December meeting, and it's contemplated that you may issue these bonds in multiple series as you see certain needs arise and as you get certain bids in for projects. And while we do present this as one bond issue for purposes of financing, just to make it simple for everyone, it is contemplated that you may do these in two or more series over the course of two or three years as you get into the needs and identify different facilities, chillers, boilers, et cetera, that need to be addressed more quickly than what they otherwise might have been identified in that original facility assessment study. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Thurber to go over the financing of this part of it, and then you'll have public comment opportunity again, and then we'll close that public hearing. Then we'll come back in December and once again have another presentation and public hearing on this project and financing. And at the conclusion of this public hearing in December, we will then present a resolution that encapsulates all the financial information and project description that we've identified in the public hearing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Thurber.
The 2028, 2030 projects, as Jeff mentioned, the amount of that financing can be done as one bond issue, or it can be split up into several bond issues. The information you see on screen, as Jeff also mentioned, is, is presented as one bond issue. The maximum... Is it another slide?
Yeah, there's another slide.
This is a little easier to see than, than the other bar graph that we, that we presented for the 2026 hearing. The sections in green represent the debt service on all of your issues inclusive of the 2026 financing and the next financing or financings that are being approved at this current hearing, if that makes sense. So as you can see again, the debt service levy is expected to remain consistent in '26 through '2030. And then it is, it will decline every year thereafter, but in the next four years, it's to remain consistent. Your rate is dependent on your net assessed valuation. And if that NAV should be consistent or may decline a little bit, there's a lot of talk about a potential decline. You know, what we do know is the levy, the amount of money we are asking to pay these projects will remain consistent in '26 through '30, and it will decrease after that. There we go. This is the same, the same pie graph that you saw in the previous hearing. The issuance costs, we are allowing a little bit more, $270,000 on this one. And the main reason for that is the increase in the maximum borrowing amount. I'm there at stake on issue or issues that are greater in principle. The, the fees you pay may increase a little bit, but $20,000 over the cost of issuance allowance for the, the 2026 project. And then the rest will go toward hard and soft construction costs. And the maximum, maximum borrowing amount for the 2028, 2030 project is currently $14,220,000. And what that figure is, it is 1% of your current gross assessed valuation. And that is the maximum amount that the state of Indiana allows for projects of this type that are subject to the petition remonstrance process, however not subject to the referendum process. So it's essentially the maximum amount allowable now, and that is 1% of your gross AV. Maximum term of bonds for the 2028, 2030 projects is again 20. We are allowing ourselves that flexibility. Maximum interest rate allowed at 7%. Again, if you sold bonds today, you'd be at roughly 4, so probably a little less than 4. Total interest cost estimated $10,800,000. Again, that is based on the 7% interest rate, very high by today's standards. Aggregate principal plus interest is $25,020,000. Annual principal plus interest is $3.5 million. That would be the maximum amount of debt service you would pay in any one year. The 2025 debt service levy, $4.8 million. The 2025 debt service tax rate, 59 cents in 2029, the first year that the impact of this 2028 bond issue is felt, the estimated levy will be $5,076,500. The estimated debt service tax rate is again 56.95 cents or, or 57 cents, if you will. And those two amounts, the 2029 levy and tax rate, like in the previous hearing, like for the previous, or like for the 2026 project, they are inclusive of both these new financings. The percentages are the same as what you saw in the last hearing. And again, that's required information to have on hand. I am happy to answer any questions or expound on anything if you'd like.
If you go back to the, I think it's the first slide. So this assumes that we floated all the bonds upfront, right?
This is after all the bonds are sold.
In what time period?
Well, we will, well, the plan is, I should say, to sell the 2026 project bonds in the year 2026. We'll sell those bonds next year. And this, this illustration also assumes that the 2028, 2030 project bonds will be sold as, as one series in the amount of $14,220,000, or that can be split up also into more than one series of bonds. It could be split up into two series or three series or more. I would, my guess is that it'll be two or three series max, that it wouldn't be split up into any more than that.
The fact is, it's not our intent to need or spend all that money in those three years. So how long can we wait to float that bond portion of that?
Yeah, Jeff may wanna chime in on this.
There, there is actually no sunset provision on the approval process. So once these are preliminarily approved by the school board, until the school board makes a decision to rescind that action, that authority will stay out there. So in theory, while we're calling these the 2028 to 2030 projects, if you get into 2038, or 2028, 2029, 2030, and you decide you only want to issue a portion of it because of the facility needs and with respect to what's happening in the economy and with respect to what's happening at your facilities, then you can do that. If you want to push that out further and issue some of these in 2031, 2032, as long as the school board does not take any action to rescind the approval, that authority will remain with the school corporation for infinity. The other thing I would add as well, that as you do push that out further in time, while we are having some rather generous assumptions here as far as interest rates being at 7% as opposed to 4% and terms of 20 years versus something shorter, you do start to run some potential of interest rate risk by not issuing the bonds earlier than you otherwise thought as you move further out in the time horizon. So, but you will have authority that will be in place until you authorize and issue the full $14.2 million.
Is there a minimum amount, amount? I know the cost... I know the cost would go up if you break it into too small of pieces, but...
From a market standpoint, there probably is a minimum amount. You don't want to probably issue a bond issue of less than a million dollars because you'll have fixed costs of issuance with that, and by the time you would get to your project, it would not give you very much bang for your buck. Typically, the more you can issue that you know you're going to spend within a two-year period of time, in this interest rate environment, you're better off doing because you're actually able to also earn some interest on those bond proceeds, and that interest earnings can then go back into the project and do more project for you. So if you start to break it up into multiple little small bond issues, not only do you have larger fixed costs that you have to pay over time, but you'll also not get as much interest earnings because you're spending that money more quickly. So we typically advise people to look at a five, in this sort of situation where you're doing a $14 million authorization, to look at doing it every time you may have enough to spend over the next two years, whether that's $5 million, whether that's $7 million, whether that's $14 million. Just really depends on what your project needs are and the time horizon for those.
Since this lines up, the cost of issuance, that's solid $270,000, like regardless if we broke it up into three or four for the 2028.
It actually gets a little more expensive if you start to break them up. Some of those fees will go down because on a percentage basis, for example, the rating agency fee is always based on the principal amount of bonds that you're actually getting rated. So if you get all $14.2 million rated at one time, that's going to be a higher fee. If you do two $7 million, that may end up being more because they have a minimum threshold. So those will be potentially more. In addition, the cost of doing the financing as far as preliminary official statement, offering documents, those will be a little bit more. The one fee that won't really change too much is the underwriting fee or the bond purchaser fee, because that's based on a principal amount of bonds versus a percentage of the bonds being issued. So that won't change whether you do a $14 million or whether you do $7 million.
Thanks.
Any comments from the audience?
Evan? Make a motion to close out the 2028 bond hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you both. See you again next month. See you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're ready for the normal school board meeting. Start with the prayer from...
I'm going to do that.
And then prayers of allegiance.
All right. Heavenly Father, we're grateful to you for this opportunity tonight for us to come together to celebrate teaching and learning as well as serving our students, our educators, our families, and our community. As we consider the important decisions that we will make tonight, help us to be respectful and compassionate in our disagreements, thoughtful in our choices, and united in our desire to do what is best for every child. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I've got two changes that I'd like to make to the agenda. The first one is I would like to add Ms. Lauren Thompson, Western Intermediate Temporary STEM Teaching Position, to the personnel. And I sent an email with the credentials on that one. And then also, we've had two bond hearings so far today, and we've had some young people in the crowd, and I would like to move the Panther Pride in front of the mission moment so that our little people can get home at a good time. They've been doing a great job, but I've been there before. Mine are all teenagers now, but I've been there, done that. So asking for that move.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, or changes to the agenda.
Any questions? All in favor? Yes. Approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll say.
Any questions? All in favor? Up to Panther Pride.
All right, we're going to move into Employees of the Month. So we have Jacob Bright with Western Middle School. I think, Heather, are you here to do that? Okay. Jacob, you get to come on up, yeah.
Okay, so Jacob Bright was nominated by Kelsey Holt and Matt Weaver. So Kelsey is here to read the nomination. Awesome. So Jacob Bright has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication and professionalism in his role as a seventh grade math teacher, WEA Middle School representative, and a valued member of the guiding coalition. He goes above and beyond to make math engaging and accessible for his students, creating a positive and motivating learning environment. Additionally, Jacob, sorry. Additionally, Jacob does an awesome job of teamwork and generosity by supporting his cross hallway partner with commitment. He willingly shares his notes, homework, quizzes, and tests with new teachers. So I've been here four years, and this is his third year, and just goes above and beyond, helping to foster collaboration and ensure the success of the entire seventh grade. Jacob's contributions have had a meaningful impact on both students and colleagues, making him a standout employee and deserving of recognition as Employee of the Month.
I will just say one little side note. Jacob was a student at Northfield Junior Senior High School my first year as an assistant principal. So I'm sorry, Jacob, that you had to deal with me as assistant principal.
I was never in the office.
Even better.
All right, so now we have Stephanie Crua.
So Stephanie was nominated by Mrs. Nancy Erb. Stephanie has done a great job in her position for the last two years. She not only demonstrates care and compassion for the students she works with, she also demonstrates compassion for the adults she works with. She is always willing to step in and help anywhere help is needed. Stephanie is dedicated to helping all students and wants to see all students succeed. We are truly lucky to have you.
Great job.
Congratulations.
And if we could have Beau with Western Primary.
This is Beau Marley. Beau is nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Rawlings. Beau is in kindergarten, and I'm going to read her nomination. Beau has so many great qualities. Beau is a wonderful example in class and always doing what he should be doing. He is an amazing student, and he is so sweet. And at just five years old, Beau has the ability to understand the needs of others. We have seen this on the playground. Beau is able to organize a soccer game that ensures each student gets a turn while also being calm and understanding of students with sensitive needs that are playing. Beau is also selfless and ensures that others go before him. Or if he and another student get to the ball at the same time, he will let them have it. I'm so proud of Beau and so happy to have him in class.
Good job, Beau.
And Emery from the Intermediate School.
This is Emery Eads, and she was nominated for Student of the Month by her teacher, Mrs. Keough. And so Mrs. Keough is here to read the nomination today.
I love this because she's so modest. I said that earlier today. It's like, you're so humble.
All right, I am happy to nominate Emery Eads. Emery comes to school every day with a sweet smile, always has something silly and funny to share, and gets right to work. She's a friend of many and is always lending a helping hand. She stands out for being such a hard worker and is always wanting to make sure that she has completed tasks accurately and to her best ability. As mentioned earlier, she is a friend of many, always makes it a point to include others, whether it be in my classroom or out on the playground. We have a lot of open discussions in my classroom, and she never excludes anyone. Although she is, for the most part, quiet in my classroom, she is usually the one initiating conversation with others, making them feel seen or heard. This is such a wonderful trait, but even more so when a young child possesses it. Emery stands out to me for many reasons, but her kindness, her hard work ethic, and her positivity make her absolutely shine. She represents being a panther in the best way.
Good job, Emery. Good job. Must get it from your mom.
All right, next is Jace from the Middle School.
Jace was nominated by Andrea Turner and Izzy Johnson. Jace has demonstrated new leadership skills. He has taken the lead in completion of projects in class, his social studies ancient civilization project, and in science, the completion of labs. Jace is willing to step up in class to assist his peers in understanding math problems, not giving them the answer but actually walking them through the steps. Jace has increased the use of his coping skills to remain in the classroom and has begun advocating for himself by asking for clarification if he does not understand the year assignment, or his eyewitness asking for some extra work so he could work harder. Jace is the first student to ask to help others. He will teach on the whiteboard and is always willing to lend a hand. Jace is a very hardworking kid and truly deserves this award for always going above and beyond on his schoolwork.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Jace.
And we have Kason from the High School.
Okay, Kason is a student in my Spanish II class this year, and from day one, he has worked hard, has a positive attitude and good energy in our classroom. We recently got a new student to our class who is originally from another country, and he is also an English learner. At the end of the first day, the new student was in class with us. I overheard Kason introducing himself to this student, asking the new student his name, but even more so than that, he wanted to make sure he was pronouncing it correctly. I mentioned it to Kason the next day and learned that he and his friends had invited this new student to sit with them at lunch. And Kason also invites this new student to be in his group whenever we are playing a game or doing group work, and it warmed my heart so much to see his actions. I imagine it has made our new student feel seen and welcome to Western. And I am proud to nominate Kason as the Student of the Month in recognition of the kindness that he shows his classmates at Western.
Hey, congratulations. Cheerio and a producer. Just checking.
I know his grandpa would be proud with that Ohio State shirt there, for sure. So just a couple other things for Panther Pride. We did have Cody DeHaven present at the H-E-C-C conference. So he sent us a selfie of him and his group. I don't know if it can be up there or not, but that's okay. And then also, we had Andrew Bowers present at a language conference as well. He told me that. So it's nice to have our staff going out and presenting. And then also to congratulate Ryan Berryman for his 2026 Hall of Fame IHSCA nomination. So yeah, there's Cody there. Had a lively group, and then obviously there was a memo about, or a press release about Ryan's nomination or acceptance into the Hall of Fame there. So congratulations to him. And that's all the Panther Pride I have.
So we're going back now, or going to the mission moment now?
So I'd like to invite the Intermediate School up for their mission moment. And I saw this as a practice presentation before you presented to your staff on DOCE. So thank you for joining us and looking forward to your presentation.
So this is just a few members of the resiliency team at Western Intermediate. Our resiliency team meets every Tuesday morning at 8:00 a.m., and we leave it open for anyone that wants to be involved in that. We are working on various strategies to implement in our building, but we've had several people come and go, but these wonderful ladies are there just about every single week and are a huge part of that. So I'm going to read you our mission statement that we came up with for semester, because this is the first year that we have used a resiliency team. And so our mission is to move our building from isolated efforts to consistent building-wide practice by educating and equipping our staff to use common language, brain-aligned regulation strategies, and relational routines across classrooms so that every student in every room experiences safety, connection, and readiness to learn. So a big task that we have, but we're committed to it. We did a presentation, this one, when we had our e-learning day back in September. We had several staff step forward and do peer-led training, which was really, really neat for our building. And this was one that went over very well, and our staff really appreciated it. And so we are not going to be doing the full presentation for you today, but we're going to give some highlights of what we trained our staff on because we just think it's really good information. So the title of the presentation is DOCE. That is an acronym for all of the happy chemicals that your brain will produce, so dopamine, oxytocin, serotonin, and endorphins. And what our goal for this professional development for our staff was, we wanted to continue to equip our staff with the knowledge of the way that our brain works, but we also wanted them to walk away with at least one strategy that they could implement that very day if they wanted to. So we are going to go through just some of the different happy chemicals, and I'm going to turn it over to these ladies.
All right, so I'm going to talk to you about dopamine. Dopamine is the part, is the brain chemical that is for regulation, motivation, reward, and pleasure, attention, and memory. So when dopamine goes up, so does learning potential. Okay, we're all familiar with that sleepy student that's low motivated, and the one that we want is the one with the higher dopamine levels that's attentive and ready to learn. Benefits for students of increasing dopamine is better focus and concentration, improved memory retention, elevated mood, and less anxiety, and more motivation and attempts to engage. For the teachers, they get the added benefit of fewer behaviors, higher student participation, and better classroom energy. And then there was a whole list of things that they could try, and during our training, we actually had some music play, and I've had to get up and have a dance party. So we're not going to make you do that today, though. Don't worry. So that's just the quick and down and dirty about dopamine.
All right. Mine was oxytocin. So oxytocin is our love drug that our brain releases. So it helps reduce stress in our midbrain. Our midbrain is always asking, who loves me? Am I safe with these people? How am I connected to them? So it increases empathy in our students, also cooperation and motivation. We know that our students or even our staff are showing signs of lower oxytocin when we have that social withdrawal, we have kiddos that are not willing or ready to participate. A lot of our students, especially our newer ones, come in with trust issues, and they just need to know that they're loved and connected. Increased anxiety, stress, especially during our testing, lack of cooperation, that our kiddos just are not wanting to work, or they don't want to work in groups with others, low motivation to get up and get going, or we can have those kiddos that we know have behavior challenges as well. A couple of things that we can do that is really easy, we wanted to give our teachers something... something they could go right back with, morning greetings, specifically by name, making sure that we have those concentration games, so things like our connection games, like everybody step over to our kiddos that maybe do not think that they are like anybody else, they're new to the school, they don't know anybody, making sure that they have some sort of commonality, common ground with somebody in their room. It's even more powerful when adults make sure that they join in on this. Belonging, so this also can increase attendance. We can make sure that we have classroom jobs, noticing when our kids are absent, wishing them well, so that all of our kiddos, when they're there, they know that we are missing them and that they are valued in our room. Touch, high fives, hugs, things like that, having chants, classroom mottos, and building community in our rooms, and having those high expectations that Western's known for.
Okay, I'm gonna skip, and I'm going to go to this, because I'm gonna explain serotonin first. So serotonin is the mood stabilizer. It is important, because it helps keeps us balanced. When we are steady and we are balanced, our mood is well and we learn well. It makes us feel calm, happy, and confident, and we handle our stress better, and we feel better about ourselves when our serotonin is balanced. So one of the ways that we do this in our building, and it is building-wide, you guys came in a little bit later, so you didn't get to see it, but we put up different sensation match with pictures that go with it out in the front, and what you do is you take a post-it note, and you just kind of put it on, you can put your name, a symbol, whatever you want, you can leave it blank if you don't want people to know that it's yours, and you just put it on the sensation that you can connect with, and you identify in that moment. So it's thinking about your body and the sensations within your body, because those lead to feelings, the feelings lead to actions, actions lead to, you know, learning, responses, behavior, all of that. So it's just becoming self-aware, and this is a big part of understanding your levels of serotonin is with this check-in. So we do it in each classroom, every time we leave a classroom, go into one, and it's based off of something like that. There are ways to recognize low serotonin in yourself. We stress that with the adult, it's the most important, because we are the ones leading the classrooms. When we are stressed, when we are unaware, that trickles down to our students. So these are just ways that you can notice if your serotonin levels are low. These are ways that you can notice it in students. When we notice it in students, then we can be proactive, and we can give them strategies, and we can give them time and try and boost that serotonin, get them back in steps, because if they can't, then they're not going to learn. So, and then these are just strategies that we use, mindfulness, a positive workspace, kind of like for us as adults, I know like if you walk around the classrooms and you see the spot where the teacher is set up, you see a lot of the pictures of their families. It's considered an anchor. It's, that's what makes them feel better, it kind of brings them back to that positive note. And then the sun is a huge thing that can boost your serotonin, sometimes we're inside all the time, just literally walking outside, it's a natural way to boost it. And then for kids, giving them a quiet spot to relax, gratitude sharing, giving them jobs. When you give kids jobs, when they feel important and they feel like they are doing a good job, then that automatically boosts their serotonin, it boosts their confidence, and then they feel like they can do more, and that just gives a trickle effect. So there's other ones there. The activity that we did in the training, we just got in a big circle, and then whoever was on your right, you had to share one thing that you liked about that person. It started off kind of silly, and then like by the end, we actually kind of got a little deep, and everyone was kind of like, okay, we need to move on from this. But it was nice, because even if you don't know the people, like you have something nice to say, and everyone laughed and was smiling. It was a natural way to boost it.
And I have endorphins. Endorphins are basically produced in the body and are similar in function to morphine, so they act as a natural painkiller. They're mood boosters, and they create a sense of well-being and can elevate your mood. Some triggers that will trigger endorphin release is just some exercise, laughter, other enjoyable experiences, even eating things that you enjoy, like chocolates, ice cream, wine. Do you have some chocolate cookies? If anybody could. She said no wine, I don't know why. I asked for you, and you know. But really, what this is for is because in the classroom, and even in the school setting as a whole, it improves attention, focus, a sense of belonging, and enhanced learning, increased confidence, and stress reduction, similar to the other happy chemicals. And when I did my activity, I kind of focused on doing something that you could do from a seated position, maybe at your desk, that wasn't quite giving up, because there are all mornings where we don't want to getting up and doing an activity with the group. Maybe we can do a quiet, more calm one, on an individual basis at our desk. So I passed out little post-it notes, and they had to draw tiny little emojis that was something about themselves. And then they went up, each person did, and they shared what each emoji meant to them. So for instance, I believe mine was a book, a paw print, and I can't remember the other one. But then I shared, you know, a book, I love to write and read paw prints, I love to focus on shelters that animal rescue and things like that. So that not only lets your peers know something more personal about you, it creates like a bonding moment, but then it's just something simple that they can do, and drawing is a natural and easy way to have an endorphin release similar music.
All right, so we were talking about how we would like to give one thing for our teachers to give back. And if you know anything about teaching, we like to get as much thing for a bunk, and very limited amount of time, we got a lot to do on our plate. So we would like to invite everybody to experience a dose of all these happy chemicals together. We're gonna do one of my favorite games, it is called double double, so if you'll please stay.
This is the interactive portion, I'm sorry.
I call it the. Or not. No. All right. So we're gonna get all four of those happy chemicals going. So we're gonna make sure that we feel connected, we're united, we're gonna make sure that we reduce stress. So everybody is gonna hold our hands up, you need to make sure that you are close to somebody else, all right? With this is the concentration game, and it'll also get your students ready, so we'll start really slow. So first, we're gonna, any time you say double, we're gonna clap each other's hands. So it goes like this. Double, double, this. And we'll flip over, this, this, flip, double, double, flip, that, that, double, this, double, that, double, double.
I'm already messing it up.
Now, you are not, your endorphins have not kicked in yet, so now we go a little bit faster.
Oh my gosh.
Double, double, this, this, double, double, that, that, double, this, double, that, double, double, this, that. Let's try it.
I was good with it.
You know, in your teens, here we go, fast. Double, double, this, this, double, double, that, that, double, this, double, that, double, double, this, that.
So as you can see, you're all feeling a boost of those happy chemicals. I see lots of smiles. We're gonna wrap up, because Carrie did bake cookies for our training, and we wanted to give you the best part of that, our Carrie's double championship cookies. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Hey, thank you to the intermediate school. And do any of the board members have questions for the intermediate school?
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
I need to check my heart rate, I think, because it's a little elevated. Any questions for W I S? Okay. Hey, thank you all.
All right, we have opportunity for public comment. We have Mr. Tracy Powell with us. So state your address.
Tracy Powell, 922-200E, Tipton, Indiana. That is a hard act to follow. I don't have dessert, so I'm in trouble. I just wanted to come in and introduce myself. I am county commissioner in Tipton County, Indiana, in my second term. I am on the Indiana County Commissioner Executive Board, I'm a treasurer on the executive board, so I spend a lot of time at the state house. I am running for state senate district 21 in your area, meeting a lot with, I appreciate Mr. DuBois and Mr. Zahn here, met with me a week or two ago, had a great conversation. I've met with three other school corporations, and I've got the rest of them on my schedule, trying to hit all the school boards if I can. Looking at some of the, as I've heard you guys talk a little about S E A One and things of that nature, I think it's just very important that we get people down in the state house who understand local government, and ninety percent of our students are educated in a public school. So I think that's very important, and what S E A One did to the schools, to the towns, to the libraries was devastating, and I don't think they realize that, many of them have told me, there's unintended consequences, so I think we need people down there who understand local government, people who are gonna stand up and actually come and talk to the constituents, talk to the school boards, talk to the libraries, and see what's needed before we make rash judgments. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and I appreciate you guys telling, giving me the information. I definitely take that to state house. I talk to the other representatives and senators now, explain to them how it's already affecting, and we're hoping we can make changes on S E A One, because I don't think it's done yet. They promised us there will be some tweaks, so hoping to make some tweaks that help all you guys out and our students of this state of Indiana.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Powell4Indiana.com.
And we have the treasure report. Kyle, do you have cookies?
I was thinking milk.
All right, as it gets larger here, you'll see that end-of-the-month balance totaled twenty million, eight hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Investments in CDs that we still have out total six hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars. Those will come back into our accounts for good. I'll explain why for good here in a little bit, but those come back in in March. The interest that we earned this last month totaled seventy-two thousand, four hundred ten dollars and seventy-eight cents. So our fund totals with the CDs totaled twenty-one million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and fourteen cents. As a reminder, a significant portion of that is the 2024 bonds that we sold and continue to dispense out as we complete the projects above us, around us, and I guess in the walls with the electrical. The payroll claims that were being submitted for approval totaled one million, six hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. That is two and a half pays, I say half, because the retro pay is in there that was paid out on 10/17. Vendor claims that it's being submitted for your approval totaled two million, two hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Other things to report out, we have a new First Farmers Bank and Trust interest rate agreement. As a reminder, what we had over this last year was the Trust Indiana seven-day average minus eight basis points. We have that same calculation, but rather than being eight basis points, it's five basis points for this next year. So in our advantage, I'll say that it likely would have been higher than the eight basis points we had last year, ten or above, but we were able to sell them on our high cash balances, which is to their advantage. We also have made the pledge that over this next year, we'll keep all the money in the First Farmers account and won't do the CDs, which as you guys have heard me when I reported out, the CDs that we've had a lot of this last year have tracked almost identical with the interest that we received from the banks. I don't see us losing anything by keeping the money in First Farmers with this competitive, very competitive rate that we are hitting. Now, we know, and we just heard Mr. Thurber talk about, the interest rates are coming down, which when you're selling bonds is good, but when you're drawing interest in your bank, means you're not drawing as much interest as high interest, and that's something that we'll have to tweak within our budget, probably for the next foreseeable years to come. Now, the other thing that I'll report out is our 1782 notice was sent to us late last week. No surprises, which is a good thing. The appropriations that we requested for rainy day debt service education operations were what we requested, with the exception of rainy day. We asked for four hundred thousand dollars, which has been our custom, not with the intent to spend, but with the kind of safety valve that is there if and when we need it. They lowered us to three hundred forty-six thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars. The reason for that is when you have an appropriation, they assume you're going to spend it, which wouldn't have been a problem, we still would've got our full asking appropriation, but we also have part of our rainy day fund out in CDs, which they don't give you credit for. So my response to the 1782 notice will be to ask for them to kind of reconsider this, and I'll have them lower our current appropriation for 2025 by the amount that's the difference between the three hundred forty-six thousand and change and four hundred thousand, and then increase our 2026 appropriation. Again, of 2025, we haven't spent a cent of it, but it's there for kind of our safety that if we would need, for a rainy day. It's there for a rainy day, keeps us happy to go to ask for additional appropriation if we do need it. Also, on the 1782 notice, I want to let you know that the levies that we requested, they lowered them slightly, very slightly, about three hundred dollars in operations. Debt service, they lowered just a little bit more due to our end-of-the-year cash balances being a little bit higher. Our total tax rate then, what we projected we'd be when we had our budget hearing, our budget meeting, was 1.0846. What we came in at was 1.0821. And as I mentioned during the bond hearings, this is down from the 1.1431 that we were for 2025. So if we have community members that tell you or us that, you know, their tax burden went up this next year in 2026, it's not because of our tax rate, it's most likely because their A V went up and their property and home is worth that much more in 2026 compared to what it was in 2025. That is all that I have to report out, would have to answer any questions, but you received my supporting documentation. I submit for your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll second it.
Any questions? All in favor? Thank you, Kyle. Lindsay, Director of Central Learning and Test.
All right, so you've had an opportunity to look at my report. As far as title and E L, we did have Nathan Williamson, who we are working with to move from target into school-wide. He was in some observations in the graduate intermediate there at the end of October, and we had a follow-up meeting with the principals. He had lots of good things to say, but we've got some improvement to make in some areas, too. So he's reading through our school improvement plans, kind of get us all in line with that school-wide approach. We had several of our E L teachers attend a multilingual conference through LEVI. I think we had eight or nine attend, so that was really great to see that. That's funded through our Title III grant. As far as special ed, just continuing to do case conferences, I know here in November, we've had about ten or eleven move-ins in the primary building, and so we're trying to get all those wrapped up and finalized. December one count is coming, it's on Monday, the first, which is right after Thanksgiving, so, you know, we're trying to get everything finalized and wrapped up before Thanksgiving, so we can be all ready for that. But we'll see how that all rolls out, which we'll work on with Power School and try and get all the kinks out.
Lindsay, could you give them just a Reader's Digest version of some of the challenges with Power School?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So we've had a lot of the information that's being inputted into case conferences and finalized isn't necessarily carrying over to the special ed program. And so like the least restrictive environment may not be coming, be carried over into DEX, which is our data exchange program. And so that's created problems and errors in our DEX, and we're having to go in individually to that special ed program and put in those L R Es, put in whether they're non-pub, we had all the non-pub kiddos that we have at St. Joe, we had to go in and individually put in their non-pub L R E number as well. So it's just, it just takes a lot of time. There are Power School webinars weekly, sometimes there's multiple per week. I know this week, I'm with Susie and Wendy, we're going to the North Central Roundtable meeting on Thursday, so hopefully there'll be, there'll be more information, whether it will be very clear, who knows, but there's just a lot, a lot to this new Power School system, and being sure that everything is carrying over, so we get the correct number and the correct amount of money that we need for all of our students.
And this is a statewide issue, not just a Western issue, but kudos to Lindsay, Susie, Wendy, all of our special ed teachers. I mean, not only is there a learning curve, but to have the learning curve and issues on top of that, it's been a lot of work, a lot of extra work, so thank you all for doing that.
Any questions on my report?
I have something, Lindsay.
Yes.
In three months, you had a hundred and sixteen case conferences. So do you think you have most of, how many special ed students are there?
It's hard to know the exact number right at this moment, but we're four hundred, four twenty-six, somewhere around there.
So you still have five.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, goodness.
And that does not always, those numbers don't always include what's happening with our administrators either, because they are helping with a lot of case conferences as well. well, which I very appreciate.
Can I piggyback on that? How much time in planning, conference, and follow-up? What, for one case conference, what's a ballpark time that it takes to do the planning?
For the teacher or for?
Well, for whoever's involved.
I'd say an cumulative total.
Yeah. I mean, I would say, you know, when we actually have the case conference, we try to keep most of them to an hour, hour and a half max. There are some cases where we have to reconvene or there's some cases where parents want to have a certain block of time. And so we try to allow for that when we can, but it's hard to have that because we have so many other duties that we need to, we need to be servicing kids. But for a teacher to plan through like the I U P process, getting the notice of case conference out, which is like the invitation, you know, making sure everybody's schedule aligns, I mean, it could take an hour, an hour and a half, maybe longer to even write the I U P. And then you're, you know, you're sitting at a case conference for an hour to an hour and a half. There may be things that you have to update after that and you have 10 days to kind of do that. So again, you're looking at three plus hours, you know, for sure. And it depends on the case because every student's different and every E is different. And so, but I would say three, three hours would be a little low ballpark, including the conference.
150 hours almost in September.
Yes, yes.
We'll have a void.
Yeah.
Quick question. Did they just do some like I learn prep here recently or I read prep?
I think we did I read prep.
There was a checkpoint, there was a checkpoint, just recently.
Do we know how, any results from that?
Those should be coming out in the parent portal.
Okay, no scares. Just overall, I'll see what we're doing.
Our second checkpoint has opened. It opened yesterday.
Okay.
So, and it goes through January and I think maybe beginning of February. So that should be coming out in the parent portal, that information.
Any other questions? Craig?
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to give a quick rundown real quick on the new website. I know I've been mentioning it for the last few months. Natalie Newland, who is working on the website, she's actually going to be, is writing a lot of the content. The bones are there for the website. So each school has its own site. Everything's there as the layout. We're just now, Natalie's putting the data in, if you will, so the actual details for our school. We're still looking for, I knew I mentioned Thanksgiving, we bumped it back to December 1st for release date. That's still somewhat tentative because the amount of data we're trying to get put into that site. But we are trying for a December 1st launch date for our new site, which I'm excited about and it'll be a lot easier to use, a lot easier to manage, and better for everybody in the community as well. It'll be a good, good site, I believe. Another, other item I wanted to highlight is some projects we're working on. During the breaks, we have a couple of things. There's going to be upgrading. I know I mentioned in the last couple of months about upgrading our internet access. Actually, the last step is going to be done hopefully on Wednesday before Thanksgiving to bump us up to that full doubling our speed for our internet for the district. Also, just basic projects and E rate. I put E rate in here again because this time of year, our question timeframe ends tomorrow. So vendors have the ability to ask questions. And at that point, the project closes, they give a bid, and we can purchase our hardware and licensing for our network equipment. Any questions?
Craig?
Thanks.
Mr. Bates?
Thank you, Mr. Gaskins, and good evening to everyone. A couple late updates from, from my office. Wanted to thank the elementary administrators for allowing our school bus safety week in each of their buildings. I know that takes away a little bit of the instruction, but it's well worth it in the end with those kiddos. Also, just another update on safety, planning with the administrators to review our reunification plan, which is at Northview Church. So we'll be working with them this month to review that along with staff. And happy to report that we're almost fully completed with our state mandated safety trainings for our staff. Updates on transportation, you guys will have in front of you this evening a recommendation for a new minibus SPV order. So hopefully you guys will take that under consideration. I know a lot of our SPVs, we currently have six on the fleet right now. Two of those are approaching 200,000 miles. So they're getting to the end of their life and just want to make sure that our students have good transportation there. Also happy to report that we do have one new driver who will be going on Friday to test for their C D L. So we're excited about that. And also we're getting a lot of good quality aids for our bus. So we're looking forward to getting those. Finally, updates on curriculum. Was able to attend a meeting along with Mr. Edwards on school accountability, which is going to be coming very, very soon. And there's going to be a lot of impact all the way down into the primary building for that. So stay tuned for more information on that. And tomorrow, we'll be having Jordan Pride Moore come in to help with some of our teachers on curriculum mapping. So looking forward to that. That is my report for November pending your questions.
Ladies first.
Jordan Pride Moore, you said with helping with curriculum mapping. Is that for new teachers?
No, it'll be for looking at all of our curriculum maps and also making sure that they're vertically aligned. So that way that each grade level, you know, knows the current standard and also isn't teaching something that isn't on there that might already be taught at another grade level. So working with her, and I know she's also worked with Mr. Zahn and Ms. Hurst. So looking forward to having her in front of our teachers.
There's also in that curriculum mapping, there's resources, like aligning resources because I know that's some of the concern from our teachers is resources. So instead of getting a box curriculum, looking more at a layered curriculum to be able to meet their needs and to help them align and just have their resources available to them instead of searching and trying to find things to teach.
So is this someone who's coming in like several times? Or she is not going to be able to do this in one day for?
Correct. Yes. I believe tomorrow she's coming in at the intermediate. She'll be there all day. And then we also have another meeting set up for her to come with the primary. But yeah, as of right now, yeah, it'll be multiple days and she'll be spending a little bit of time with each grade level.
A lot of it's to get feedback from the teachers and like walk and walk through that process so that it's not adding work to our teachers, but getting their input to have a product that they feel confident with to be able to, to teach to the high level that they desire.
Is this all the way through high school?
Eventually. We'll get there. We gotta start, we gotta start somewhere. The end goal is to have it vertically aligned, K through 12.
Yeah.
SPV, you're recommending Thomas, is that correct?
No, Thomas. It is international. It is something that we, we sent you guys three bids. Thomas is on there. Went with international because we currently have Bluebird and international on our fleet. And our bus drivers have parts for those, know how to work with them. We currently don't have any Thomas. So that's why we tried to stay away from them.
All right. Sorry, I missed that read.
No, that's okay. That's no problem.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Barrett, Mark?
Yes, thank you. You've had a chance to look at my board report. Just a couple things. I've been attending a lot of things and collaborating, meeting with a number of people. But one of the highlights to point out, collaborated with Meridian Health, they've had some changes in staff and so met a new individual there who will be overseeing the nurses in some of our programming. But they've been very pleased with the referrals that they've had for behavioral health and feeling like they could see at some point adding some more skills builders to, to the buildings as we see more referrals made for behavioral health. So that is encouraging because I know that was an area that we weren't getting that support in as much as we were hopeful for. Also, attended the Lions Club Fisher-Fry. I want to give a big thanks out to the Lions Club as this is part of, for our scholarship here at Western, supported by the Lions Club. It's great to see, big turnout. Had a really great weather. When you talk about having snow on Monday and 70 degrees-ish on Saturday, that's, that was a blessing to have a great day there. But really appreciate the, just the community support from them. And also, we've been attending a number of different meetings with Barton Co-Villima on updates on our roofing. You can't tell right now, but the roof that is above our head is new. And what's encouraging is I don't see any wet tile after a day like today. So that's a good sign. But we did replace this roof over the last two weeks. You can probably see that we have a couple areas that are blocked off because they're moving things from that standpoint. But we're aligning a lot of our roofing timelines, our electrical timelines with our solar timelines. We're going to start seeing delivery for some of our connections and electrical stuff for our solar project here in December. Panels will probably show up in February, March, and they will start over at the intermediate schoolwork through the primary and then probably that'll go through April. And then through the summer, they will be putting the panels, middle school, high school, this roof. So that's exciting to see that that's moving and shaking. And so we've, like even today, we had back-to-back meetings. We met with Virgi on that, that timeline and construction work. And then we met with Barton Co. and Ensley Roofing. And so it's just, it's a lot to align. And Barrett and Kyle and John have been involved in a lot of that. And I know we're going to pull Craig in here pretty soon with some things with technology. It's, it's a team effort. And so thank you to all the people involved in that. But it's exciting to have these projects go on. It's also takes a lot of flexibility because I know, like I told Suzie today, that it's going to get really loud in her office next week because we're going to be taking her roof off and putting a new roof on. Maybe. We'll see about putting it back on. But, but I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's nice to see these projects in action. It's encouraging to start taking steps towards future projects as well as we start seeing some of the feasibility study take action. So that's my report. I will answer any questions that you may have.
Mark, is Meridian providing therapists also?
Yes, they're, they're doing the therapists. And that's, one of the, the nice things is they're getting kids through this process where we have the referral, they have the therapist, they're doing the intakes, and then they're connecting with skills coaches. So we're seeing a quicker turnaround than just everything getting backed up.
Are these in person?
Yeah, they're actually in their, in Melissa's building. Jamie, do you have one in your building too? Yeah, yeah, they're mainly housed in the intermediate primary school.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark. We have design criteria developer contract.
So as we start moving through the bond process, we're kind of working this simultaneously so that we can hit the ground running if everything goes as planned and is approved. But to do the design build process that we are walking through, we need a design criteria developer. And we are making the recommendation for Dan Rollins to be that D C, D C D, I believe is what it's called. Yes. And that's part of the requirement by law to do design build. It's, he represents us in this process. He helps and actually develops the R F P, goes through the R F Q process so that we, he's our representative, so to speak. And so that's recommendation is to approve Dan as our D C D.
Make a motion for, to approve the D C D contract?
Second. Any question?
Well, that's a new name for me. Who've we used in the past?
We've not done a design build process before, but like when we've done R F Ps and R F Qs before, we've had like Barton Co. do a project like that for us.
Aren't they doing the project for us now?
They are doing our current roof, yes. And they don't do design build. They're an architect firm, which we could, I mean, they can do R F Ps and R F Qs, but we can choose multiple architect firms if we so desire to do that. So we've made the recommendation for, for Dan to do the design build portion of that.
When you, I guess I'm not quite familiar with like design build. Are they designing what's going to be done?
So he will, he will set the criteria for what we want in the design build process. Like we've been getting estimates to kind of get an idea of what our bond is, but we need a third party to actually create the criteria so that we, as a public entity, we have to have that to protect us rather than just say, oh, okay, that, that looks good from somebody who just gives us a, an estimate. So that's where Dan's on our team. Not that, I mean, everybody's on our team. We want to work together, but Dan is there to write the criteria, help us score the R F Qs. So if we have multiple design build companies say we want to do this project, then, then basically Dan will help us score that with his expertise in that area to then make sure that we have the right company and meet that scope of project that we want to have.
So he'd be involved all the way till completion or just up front?
Through the, through the R F P and R F Q process. And then who we choose in the design build process will then take over as the, the designer and the builder of that project.
Any other questions? All in favor? Projects and financing information. Oh, I asked the wrong page. I'm sorry. I go the other way. Sorry. I'll add. I appoint a technical review committee.
Okay, so with that, Dan will work with a technical review committee. And we are making the recommendation for that technical review committee to include, and this is in accordance with Indiana code, this would include Dan, Kyle, John, Barrett, myself, and then Adam Waddell would be our local electrician who would serve as the contractor. And Adam has worked in our buildings for years, knows it inside and out. So we're asking for that group to be appointed as the technical review committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the technical review committee.
Second. Harry? Any questions? All in favor? High school classes.
Making a recommendation from the high school classes with technical math, technical English, AP Psychology, and AP Prec calculus. These classes are being presented to you tonight as part of meeting some of the new pathway and graduation option requirements for the students moving forward into the new diploma. And Steve, did I miss anything there? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the new high school classes.
Second. Just a quick question. AP Prec calculus, is pre-calculus?
Steve, AP Pre-Calc?
That's what it's called.
Yeah.
Okay.
You might have taken it if it was offered, right?
Actually. Any other questions? All in favor? Anything else? Curricular approval?
Yes, and this is to follow up. We've had a 30-day, actually a 58-day review of CPR, Creating Positive Relationships. This would be the Human Sexuality Curriculum for the Middle School. We've used this curriculum, I believe, for 10 years now, but with the new. ten years now. Um, but with the new um, state law, we just wanted to bring this back in front of the board to get your approval for uh, that curriculum.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? SPV recommendation?
I'm gonna pass this off to Mr. Bates, since he likes to buy buses, right?
Well, sure.
I just wanted to recommend to the board.
This is still Kyle's cookie.
Okay, we're back. I would like to recommend to the board a fourteen-passenger gas uh, SPV at a hundred and six thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Um, attached were three quotes. Uh, those quotes were from Bluebird, Thomas, and Case International. Uh, we were looking at the International Case um, as explained to Mr. Stevens. Um, we have those buses on our lot and our mechanics are very versed in working on those. So I wanted to recommend that to the board and my apologies for having ice in.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Are you drinking milk with that?
No.
All in favor?
No, just uh, just on a note, it, it's hard to believe that, you know, six years ago, we were buying SPVs for sixty-five thousand dollars. So just a, just a memory note there. That's amazing how much it's increased.
Neola Board Policies, first read.
Yeah, so we have a number of Neola policies. Um, thank you Laura for um, the organization and, and laying all this out. Um, she does a great job with um, making it all color-coded and Reader's Digest versions to be able to understand what we're changing. But um, we did meet with um, uh, Mr. Snotty and went through a number of Neola policies. There's a number of things that are gonna be rescinded over this period of time. There's going to be some updates. And then there's also four technical corrections. Um, and they have asterisks next to them. So that's policy fifty-four sixty-two, policy eighty-one twenty-one, policy eighty-four oh-five, and policy eighty-five hundred. Those are like fixing grammatical errors. It doesn't actually change the policy. And so we can actually approve technical corrections on the first read and then we can just move everything else to the second read. So obviously, uh, these are just for your review, so there's not a vote on any of this other than if you'd be willing to approve the, the four technical corrections on this first read, then we can just remove those from the list and you don't have to worry about those.
Can we remove the ones that were just crossed out?
Actually, that actually has to go, I asked that question because um, the ones that are rescinded, we still have to go through that process to formally rescind those as well. So yeah, I tried, but I, I was told no.
So are we asking questions now or not? Do you have a question?
Why you make a motion if you want to, do we want to make a motion first to?
Make a motion to?
The four non-
The four technical corrections.
Approve the, yeah.
Approved.
I'll second.
Okay, now we can have, now questions, Greg?
Uh, yeah, on PO zero-one four-two, September twenty-twenty-five election eligibility, did a law change or did I miss something? Why Neola changed the age from twenty-one to eighteen for being eligible to be elected as a school board member? And my questions are, I know twenty-one's only three years more, but when you get out of school, life changes and the life experiences and things you did. This position is very involved and there's things going on at the school every day, every week. It take a lot of different things of life ability or skills and awareness. And it seems a little rushed to change that to that. When, and I know you can, you can be drafted, you can be, join the service, you can um, vote and all that stuff. But when you start having to get a job and maybe change your life and your positions, where you live, how you work with other people and interact every day, it just gives you more life skills and more abilities maybe than you would have at eighteen. Is there something, they have to do this or can we? Cause Neil also said we could choose to adjust the policies accordingly for our school system if we need to. And if we can, my recommendation would be put it back to twenty-one instead of eighteen. So I just didn't quite understand why they made that change.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll get some clarification from Ryan on that. Um, but um, yeah, I, I mean, you as board members can pretty much choose how you wanna create these policies or, or, yeah, unless there's some law that's forbidding us from doing it. But I, I will follow up with Ryan on that. Um.
I think that'd be a safe adjustment, but.
I'm just trying to visualize the school board made up of all recent co- high school graduates.
And, and you know, sometimes you do see that. I mean, you see that on the news every once in a while, so.
He's a lot younger.
Yeah.
Make it stop being high school.
That's true.
Is he a mayor at twenty years old in Frankfurt or something? I'm not sure, but.
But I, I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Just curious.
On that with Ryan, for sure.
Any other questions? All in favor of the four technical corrections being approved tonight? unanimous? Okay, so that takes those four off the next read and then we'll do the other approvals next month?
Yep, and I'll, I'll follow up with Ryan on Greg's request.
Can I, can I just ask a question? Is it okay to ask a question? I just wondered who our corporation compliance officer was.
Right there. Yeah.
All right, I didn't know.
Yeah, so watch out.
I know it's said in there that maybe you should have a, a male and a female, have two. Oh, so we do have two? All right. All right, thank you, you two.
Donations and grants.
Yeah, so asking the board um, for their approval for the grants that are presented. But I also have Wendy and Suzie here. I don't know, would you guys mind just giving a quick shout-out? I know Wendy, Wendy did some major legwork on this and so this is a big grant. This is really exciting stuff for CASEC, so give them a little explanation here.
Okay, so um, we were gifted the Community Foundation Grant, thirty-seven thousand dollars, and then um, also applied for the Solidarity Federal Credit Union, which is another thousand dollars, all in to support our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old Invest program. Um, it's a cooperative program. We've talked about it before. Um, this is our second year. So with the first year under our belt, we were like, okay, this is something new. We have never explored before. Now in our second year, we've really tried to think outside the box. Okay, what do we do to prepare um, our eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds with disabilities for the workforce? What skills are we giving them? What opportunities, meeting them where they are, soft skills included. Um, but a lot of our students don't even know um, what it is that they might like to do. Um, so what this will purchase is a system and it's all-inclusive, um, training's included for our staff. And um, basically they're going to be able to do hands-on um, training and assessment, um, whether it is um, I don't know how to read it yet, uh, consumer services, uh, construction, computer technology, a lot of things that, you know, we, we try with our high school classrooms to do drop, job trials, community um, service events, things like that. We have a great coffee shop here with Nikki Rodman's classroom. But again, it's, it's having, putting a, a drill question on it. I mean, it's something that we've never really thought of before, but again, it's very structured. Um, and the assessment is there again to create that independence, um, the confidence and the things, and even the families. Wow, my child can do this. Or this may be bridged into something else, making those connections within the community. Because a lot of, I mean, the students we've had since they were three, and when they leave us, it's like, okay, we want them to be able to, to continue to be successful. So we're really excited and um, it comes uh, December tenth and eleventh. It's three pallets, it's a sewing machine, um, all kinds of things. But it's, our Invest program is at Taylor High School and um, there are eleven students in the program right now. Five are Western. Um, and then we hope by next semester um, to really get it up and going. But Lexi Hunt's class will go, Nikki Rodman's class will go. Um, we're hoping to have an open house, um, once we get it out, open and then um, we'll let it all out.
And Spencer, that will be a great story, so, yeah.
Who was the Community Foundation? Is that through Community?
Emerald.
Blankenship. Okay, that's the Howard County one, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
They were awesome to work with.
Awesome.
Yeah, very kind and they saw all the vision too, which they were like.
So if we can get, yeah, if we could do a motion on that, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the donation. Ann, great money.
Second.
Any que- any other questions?
I got just one question. Uh, did you have a, a teacher for this class? Cause didn't you have one and then you didn't and I?
Yes. But now we do.
But now you do.
And she is outstanding. She's taken the initiative to um, she looked up the program that we were talking around and striving to, to acquire and began to put pieces of that already in place in the classroom to get the students that are there. And it was almost like our vision was this going to happen and we're just gonna have to, you know, when it will happen. And so um, her name is Alex Williamson and she is a mom.
Thank you, good.
Good job. Any other questions? All in favor? The personnel.
Yes, making a recommendation for the personnel presented. Also, please note uh, the authorization of the one-time end-of-year stipend is in that as well.
So moved.
Second. Any question? All in favor? Special Development?
And please uh, approve or please uh, see the uh, request for PD for November of twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Or remember, round table, uh, Cindy, can you go first tonight?
Sure. I was still looking through, by the way, congratulations on the RoboKind grant. Um, again, I appreciated the mission moments, the, the students and the educators of the month. Um, as we're coming up on Thanksgiving, it's um, affirming again to hear about all of the cool things that are happening. And I know there aren't a lot of folks in the room, but there is a newspaper reporter, so when I get the Kokomo Tribune and there's a story about Western, about our coaches or athletes, um, uh, at seven AM in the morning, I'm very happy to, to open and read those things. So I appreciate your reporting, but again, I think it speaks to the community we have. It is a release of the orphan at seven AM when I'm trying to wake up. So, so if you're old like me and you have a cup of coffee in your newspaper. Um, thank you all and happy Thanksgiving.
That's right. Jill?
I also would like to thank the intermediate teachers who presented the mission moment on AEN. That was, that was great. And um, also congratulations on your donations for the Invest program. It sounds like that's a great thing for our students to prepare them to go out into the world and, and be able to be productive citizens, cause that is our mission. And um, and to, and to like Cody DeHaven and Ryan Berryman, you know, it's good to see teachers be recognized. Um, because our teachers do such great things. We, we do have a lot to be thankful for, including buying buses, Barrett, because when I was at that, that last conference, I think, you know, schools were saying how they had, their buses are so old, cause they can't afford to buy new ones. I thought, not us, we are buying school buses.
They could buy them from us.
They should. You have a good deal.
First and foremost, um, I, I had the opportunity um, on Halloween for uh, Mrs. Lazar's class, sixth grade, to be a ghost reader. Uh, so I really wanna say thank you to Kay uh, for that opportunity. Uh, I dressed up, of course, in a Scream ghost costume, uh, really enjoyed it. Um, and I think the kids really enjoyed it as well, so it was always fun to, to see that. Um, but to reiterate what was already said, really thankful for our school corporation, all the personnel, staff, admin, everyone that goes into this. Um, we have a lot to be thankful for, cause not every school corporation has the opportunity that we have here. Um, so very blessed with that. A lot of great things that are going on, especially over the next year, really, with solar panels and some exterior upgrades and some interior upgrades as well. So a lot of great things. So really appreciate everyone's um, commitment and what we've been able to accomplish so far this year.
Harry?
Well, I wanna thank the intermediate school for teaching us about chemicals and for putting us on public television during that exercise. We thank you for that. Um, I had a chance to go to Panther Perk and the high school uh, leadership club came, uh, Jill was there. Uh, they were just so impressive. I mean, those kids, they just introduced themselves. And we had a chance to interview like four or five of them, one-on-one, and I could see them on the school board. Yeah.
They, yeah, they could be.
Eighteen?
Maybe.
He's tremendous, Mr. Berryman, Hall of Fame, young age. Jesus, that's tremendous. So really good stuff. And once again, our staff and everybody involved, our teachers or students and all that. And also to Mark and Kyle and Barrett and probably even behind-the-scenes Laura, your hard-working effort in this bonding and trying to get the economics figured out and sorted out so we can continue to take care of our school facilities and make them better than they already are and renew what's been there fifty years, some of it. So I mean, it's great stuff. But thank you for your efforts and I know it's part of your job, but you're also going above and beyond. I know you are, cause I know the work it takes. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I normally don't say a whole lot, but Lindsay, with special ed teachers being in the family, I know what you're going through. I know what they're going through. And please convey my thanks, you guys, to all of them, because it's pretty incredible what they're having to do right now. Uh, the projects, Mark, you guys, thank you for all that. Looking forward to everything that's coming up. Um, Mr. Powell, thank you for stopping by, introducing yourself. I appreciate that. Sorry you're from Tipton, but I'll explain that after, okay? There you go. I did enjoy, I have attended, I missed yesterday, but the leadership. It's been interesting to listen to the teachers interact. That's been awesome. And I got to follow Joey so far as the ghost reader, okay? And I was told how sweaty Joey was.
Oh, it was so hot in that costume.
So, but mine had a mesh face, okay? So it was black, cause the kids didn't know. I'm probably the only person that had to cut holes in the side to put my readers on so I could see. But uh, it definitely was a great opportunity. It was fun being back in the classroom.
Have a good day, everyone. Have a safe and uh, happy Thanksgiving with your families and uh, see you next month.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
We are adjourned.